We do have two candidates who are online. I'm trying to, we will take those candidates first again in the order as submitted in the package. And I believe Kat, you were first in our package.
Yes, she was.
Okay, so Tanya, I request if you would to exit out of the meeting, just to be fair to the other candidates, and come back in about fifteen minutes. And we'll start with Ms. Cotton and we will proceed on from there. Is that acceptable, Tanya?
She's gone. So can you promote Catherine Cotton, please? Jimmy, are you able to promote Catherine Cotton?
Catherine, you should be seeing a promotion request in Zoom on your side. If you would accept, we'll make you a panelist and put you on the screen.
There she goes. Right, she is ready.
Maybe she is, maybe she isn't. Catherine, when you get a chance, will you turn your video on, your microphone on, so we can see and hear you?
I have both on.
Okay, cool. Worried Zoom was telling me something else. Alright, so as we stated, we'll go through a series of five questions and then we'll proceed on with the next candidate. We will do roundtable questioning. Councilman Benson, if you will ask the first question, then we will proceed down the line.
Yes, hello, Ms. Cotton.
Let me back up.
I'm gonna back up.
Go to go to number one instead of A, please ask candidate to do a three-minute introduction.
Okay. Alright, each candidate is being asked to give a three-minute opening statement to introduce yourself. Could you go ahead and give that to us?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm having this feeling of deja vu. Oh, wait, I have been here before. I think many of you know me personally from around town. I'm a longtime Snoqualmie resident over the past twenty some years, plus years. Also downtown resident and I've been a longtime volunteer for the Snoqualmie Fire Department. I've given more than one of you your COVID vaccines here during the pandemic and when we had vaccine clinics up at the station, as well as chatted with you while hosting some of the events at the fire stations such as the Pancake Breakfast and such. Of late, and I have been a continued officer in the and teacher within the department and the Snoqualmie Firefighters Association. More recently, I've been the co-chair of the Arts Commission, working on some very interesting stuff to, you know, continue with the revitalizations and activities around town, which is very enjoyable, something new and different for me. I'm kind of a, you know, down-to-earth, get-the-job-done type of thing, and I have to say that's the emergency services training, so I definitely have a boots-on-the-ground approach to things.
Thank you. Dr. Cotton, we're a nonpartisan body representing the entire community. What will your approach to representing an entire community and not only your immediate neighbors?
Well, the neighborhood does watch out for each other. I'm used to dealing with multiple members of the community through my volunteer work, just through living here. Some of my skills as a veterinarian, as well as an emergency worker, that really helped me is being an active listener and, you know, working with people to, you know, kind of cut to the chase or find the source of the problem and then, you know, be nonjudgmental as far as dealing with people in general. But again, try to help them in whatever capacity that that I can or a group can and come up with solutions to their perceived problem.
Thank you.
What experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Again, I feel that some of my job and life experiences, well, there's two right there, that I have have been heightened through the years is definitely, you know, listening abilities. I have excellent verbal and written communication skills. Do tend to, you know, I can multitask and certainly gather detailed information, maximize time management, you know, always try to provide goals, alternative plans, and work on, you know, coming up with compromise and doing so in a respectable way, respectful way, excuse me, to attain an ultimate goal. I do have team leadership abilities, supervisory abilities, very motivated and, you know, kind of customer-client service-oriented and with a goal of satisfaction, which I would carry over to the community.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. Are there any particular local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
By local interest, did you say local or regional?
Correct.
Okay. I certainly have, as has been highlighted in our supplemental questionnaire, you know, some local concerns as far as for city priorities and things like that. I think any way we can work on those things as well as the many you know, kind of issues that come before the council. I mean, all of these are important things. And certainly, I know you have to prioritize things. On a regional level, I would like to say see gaining more, you know, inflammation, influence in areas. Of course, I'm interested in human services, public safety, you know, infrastructure and transportation are big things for us in this area. It's problems we've been facing for some decades and continue to be working on, as well as resources. You know, we've been doing the water studies to see, you know, what our projection is going forward. And there's many other areas, you know, such as that, that, you know, we need to to address before it becomes a critical problem. You know, with some of the development that's gonna be happening within Snoqualmie, we definitely have to be aware of infrastructure and that does include roads and transportation, along with emergency services, public works, you know, all of those types of things.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Cotton. What do you feel is Snoqualmie's most valuable asset?
Well, there's honestly too many. Okay, I'll try and prioritize them. Certainly, we have the natural beauty that surrounds us all, which I think is one of the main reasons we all love coming home to Snoqualmie. Also, just the uniqueness of the town, the the historical aspects, the the community kind of kinship. Even though we've grown dramatically in the last ten years, it still has that small-town feel. You walk down the street, you're walking your dog, taking the kids out, whatever, and you, everybody says hello, even though they might not know that the the person they're passing. So I think those are the things that we all fell in love with and still is the reason like many of us are still living here.
Good evening. What committee could you serve best on and/or how much time will you be able to give to the job?
Right now, I am in the mode I would call semi-retired. Committee-wise, certainly wherever the need is for me, I would certainly like to continue working on the Arts Commission and continue my work with volunteering with the Snoqualmie Fire Department. Those are things that I do really enjoy doing, but whatever needs that the the council has, I'd be happy to, you know, jump in where I can, where I might be a good fit. And then, as far as time-wise, I'm pretty open. I know the the job description says forty hours a month. I'm sure you guys put in way more than that with meetings and and things like that, but I can certainly, you know, accommodate that with my with my schedule.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, that concludes the questions. Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Do we have LaVoye online again or?
Not yet, but she will be in a minute or two.
And Kat, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest at this stage if you want, or you may proceed on with your life for the rest of the evening.
Well, I appreciate I appreciate all your time and consideration. Thank you very much.
How do you make it do that camera and not that camera? He wants to.
She roll over, go to start video and then the little upward thing. Go to video.
Tonya LaVoye, so, and then you can move, you can move, you can move Catherine Cotton back to the attendees area.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. No, we just didn't give the option, so something more fundamental's wrong. Hey Jimmy, is there any way to move a attendee off into a virtual room of their own? Ms. LaVoye, can you hear us and would you turn your camera and microphone on?
Yes, I can hear you.
There you are. Thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed. We have about fifteen minutes. There'll be a brief introduction of about three minutes and then we have five questions in which we were asking all the candidates. Where did we leave off? I think Joe, you're next if you will ask for the introduction.
Each candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement to introduce themselves, so go ahead and begin as as you like.
Hello, my name is Tonya LaVoye and I've lived in Snoqualmie since early 2015 with my husband and our new son and our animals. And, you know, Snoqualmie, as I'm sure you've heard and you know, is a beautiful place to live, but it's also a place that we chose to raise our family because it's a safe and welcoming community and because at the time, it was an affordable place to live. And I am interested in serving on the council to make sure that those things continue to be true for our current generations and our future generations that are that are growing up here. And then also that, you know, our seniors can continue to age in place and live here and continue to enjoy that. And I'm somebody who has been involved in policy at the state level. So I, you know, I'm coming at this from a little bit broader, but I also have studied local governance in my MPA program and have been paying attention to local needs. And, you know, I've had conversations with folks at their their doors in my previous campaign and other involvement locally, and I kind of bring that all to this and want to continue to to serve my community and in in serving in a new role. And I think that I can bring a number of assets to the council. And, you know, one of those is that I am just, you know, a policy nerd who loves to ask questions and find out more and and deep dive about things. And I know that I by no means an expert on lots of things, but I'm happy to ask questions from staff and learn from my colleagues to really make sure that we're bringing the best policy we can for Snoqualmie. You know, I'm somebody who really likes to work collaboratively and work from folks from lots of different backgrounds. And I think that I I bring a perspective that's not currently represented on our council and, you know, bring that to the the table. And as somebody who has been in kind of the rooms where decisions were made as a staff perspective and watching things kind of as they unfold, I want to have a more direct role in in seeing the city where I live move forward. And we're really at a critical time for a lot of questions like housing with the comprehensive planning that's going on and what the the future of our city looks like and a number of factors. And so I think this is really continues to be a critical time to join the council. And obviously, I've shown prior interest in that and that hasn't changed. And I'll say, you know, now that I have my my son here, I think that some of my perspective has has changed a little bit and how I approach these and it's kind of just really only strengthened my desire to to be involved.
Thank you. Ms. LaVoye, we're a nonpartisan body representing the entire community. What will be your approach to representing an entire community and not just your immediate neighbors?
Good question. So, you know, I think part of that is is listening to folks from variety of backgrounds and I've, you know, already, like I mentioned, knocked on doors and had conversations with people and learning about what issues are important to them. You know, had phone conversations with people on behalf of some of our our current electeds, especially earlier in the pandemic, to see kind of what what their needs were. And, you know, even though I currently in my day job and I'm in a person position, there's a lot of really working with folks regardless of what their party background is. And we can really find common ground on a lot of things, you know, there's you know, bipartisan and nonpartisan approaches to a lot of these issues. And I'm really open to hearing from others. And, you know, there's folks that I work with that are from a different political background and we get along really well and are able to work on common ground. And I think there's a lot of, you know, diggering that can happen, especially larger levels. But when you get really down to the local level, that we're all just people and having those conversations and figuring out where people are coming from and what the motivation behind some of those needs are and getting out, we can get to solutions, regardless of political or apolitical affiliation. And, you know, somebody that would be serving, you know, all the residents of Snoqualmie regardless of where they're living and where they're from, so.
Ms. LaVoye, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
So as I I mentioned, I have my Masters in Public Administration. And so I've studied a lot of local governance, budgeting. You know, researched things like housing or housing financing and food insecurity and, you know, general leadership. So I have some of those basic skills and really coming from it as like a systems approach and being able to do SWOT analysis and those kinds of things and really ask some of those key foundational questions before we move forward with policy. Like I said, I, you know, I work currently at the the state level at the legislature, and so I am really deeply exposed to some of those decisions that are being made and some of which are directly affecting Snoqualmie. Some of those are gonna affect some of our neighbors more strongly, but it's gonna trickle over to us. And so bringing that kind of deep knowledge and also I've built some really strong relationships with some of our elected officials at a variety of levels. And so knowing kind of when there's opportunities for things like grants, you know, the the county level, like they had a aquatic facilities grant opening recently and and things like that where I have kind of those variety of sources of of information from outside of Snoqualmie that I can bring to the council and I really hone some of my policy analysis skills that I can bring to a variety of topics.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any particular local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
So I mentioned housing, so that's one that I've had the opportunity to study and, you know, learn a lot more of of policies at a deeper level. So not just zoning, but also some of the intricacies of how housing financing works and for affordable housing, some of how those tax credits work. That's one thing I'm interested in. I'm also, you know, interested in broadband access. And, you know, that's, you know, a economic issue, it's an equity issue, it's it's a variety of things that it that it touches on. And, you know, it's something that's, I think, increasingly important, especially as we're seeing a more remote and hybrid workforce and that some of us suddenly realize that maybe our internet access wasn't as good as we thought it was when we had to be as dependent as Zoom, with a lot of us have been in the last few years. So that that's something that's going on statewide is expanding those opportunities. And, you know, like I said, I'm happy to learn, so there's other opportunities to learn about other topics. I'm kind of happy to jump in.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Tanya. What do you feel is Snoqualmie's most valuable asset?
I think it's the people that live here. You know, we have folks that have chosen to live in Snoqualmie for a reason. And, you know, it's a little bit different than than some of our neighbors and recognizing that we have a variety of talented folks out here and making sure that we're, you know, hearing from them on, you know, major policy decisions happening, that that's, you know, not only are there forums for folks to participate, but that there those forums are accessible in in ways that people from a variety of backgrounds can participate in. You know, those for whom childcare might be a barrier or something to to attend an open house or something like that, making sure that there's ready formats or other ways to make that accessible. And, you know, we have some great local businesses here, both of from Snoqualmie residents, residents and those from outside the valley that that chose to to build their their business here. And, you know, recognizing that that's part of the unique flavor of of Snoqualmie and that, you know, we need to maintain that while also making sure there's opportunities for new businesses to to grow here. And that, you know, folks can really thrive in in what they they choose to pursue and making sure that's a welcoming environment to to choose to do that here in Snoqualmie as we're building our future.
Thank you. Good evening. What committee would you serve best on and how much time will you be able to give to the job?
So I think that there's a variety of committees that I could I could serve well on. Depends on how you wanna, I mean, I know we're partly through the year. And I think I am gonna have a lot of time to commit. We are the tail end of our legislative session, which is my busy season at work, and then I have quite a bit more time on my hands to to devote to service and attending committee meetings and being involved regionally where I could be useful. And I understand that there's quite a time commitment involved. I've stepped back from some of the board positions that I've had. I've taken a little bit less responsibility than I had previously and some other terms will be ending, so some of my other commitments have lessened a bit. And so that that's something where I'm fully ready to to dive in.
With that conclude the questions, thank you very much for your participation. You're more than welcome to stay to listen to other other candidates at this stage or get on with life. We'll, at the conclusion of all this, we'll get back with the candidates and let us let them know our next steps. But thank you, Ms. LaVoye.
Thank you for having me.
With that, Mike, can you let Mike know Jonathan Schofield?
I just texted him. I'll make sure I run up there too.
Yeah, I mean, in the middle, almost every other council goes, I gotta update. And Joe, you'll do the introduce themselves question on Schofield?
We could.
Could, but.
So last time I did the last question and then I introduced the next one as well.
Oh, okay.
Then we can rotate questions. If we didn't do it that way, we'd all ask the same question.
Well, why don't we, because he already did it, can you do the?
Absolutely.
Go ahead here. I believe there's a paper there which leads you through the process as well, the questions we're gonna go through. We're gonna have about fifteen minutes. And we'll start in with a three-minute introduction and then five questions following. And we'll go through that and we're doing it with each candidate. With that, I will turn it over and you will ask the introduction.
Mr. Schofield, welcome. Every candidate has the opportunity for a three-minute opening statement to introduce yourself. So please.
Sounds good. And I don't know how close I need to get to the microphone. Is this all good?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody that's joining online?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So this is going to be a little bit of a different introduction. I've been deliberating over the past couple of days on something, but it has been such a pleasure over the past, well, several years, listening and seeing what's going on, but especially over the past couple of months, diving in a little bit more to what's been going on with the city, what's been going on in the council, the meetings, the retreats, and really over the past couple of weeks or really over the past week and the retreat, I've realized a couple core things. One, it's really amazing what all of you have on your shoulders. Thank you as a citizen for what all of you do. It really is amazing. The second thing is with what you're going into in the future here, it can't just be the city staff, it can't just be the council that's doing this. You need partners in community to lend a hand to activate youth, to be a part of all of this in making our city a great city. But then the third thing, and this is what I've been deliberating on a lot, is there's a couple of core things that I do with my church, with the youth in this community as an admissions officer for the Air Force Academy that I think in taking this on, I would need to shed. And I don't believe that right now that I'm in the place to do that effectively, to be the trusted partner for all of you and carrying this out on the council. And so I'm actually pulling myself back from this, knowing that at some point in time in the future, this is on my heart and I will come back for this in some kind of cycle, I'm sure. But for right now, and you guys have not, I don't sit in eight to four meetings when I'm not interested, that you do have me in whatever capacity you need to hopefully activate youth. That is my passion. That's what I'm involved in a lot. But really help the team. So I didn't want to just pull myself back without any explanation. I'm sensitive to the fact that you guys have been going through a lot of meetings. And so I didn't want to take too much time, but I wanted to relay that in person.
Thank you.
Well, I feel like I'm too late.
I think he's the guy.
I think it's too late. He already applied. He's locked in. He doesn't get to just pull it back.
So I, let me step in then as facilitator, I guess. At that stage, I, my assumption is you don't want to subject yourself to the five questions that follow?
Well, I'm very happy to do so if it gives you purview into who I am, what I do in the community and what I can do potentially in helping and assisting what's on your shoulders right now. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that it's coming up on 7:00 PM on Tuesday night after you had meetings over the weekend and a council meeting yesterday as well. So it's, I'm at your service. If you want to, if we want to go through the questions, I'm happy to do so.
I guess at this stage, I would like to, like you said, you just made top of the list for my candidates, but you withdrew. I would like to take you up on that, but if for sake of time, any other candidates, I guess at this stage I'd like to hold and we'll bring in another candidate and proceed on, if that's okay with you.
That is, I'm at your service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yep.
If he is withdrawing, may he stay present in the chamber.
Oh, yeah.
He may stay present even if he wasn't withdrawing.
Yeah, anyone can.
Technically, he could have been here before and there was nothing we could do about it. All right. Thank you very much. And I understand everything you said so dearly. But yes, at that stage, I guess I would like to proceed on with the other candidates and we'll be talking. We like people to help, don't spill stuff on the lamp.
I know.
All right. With that, Mike, can you tell Mike to bring Luke down?
Would you like me to run and do that for you or you guys? You have it set?
Have it set.
Would you like me to sit?
You can sit and listen.
It'd be my pleasure. And I'm, thank you, and I'm sorry. Like I said, I was torn up to the point where I was walking out the door. My wife said, you should go for that. And I said, don't tell me when I've already made the decision. But like I said, I'm here at your service and thank you all for what you do.
And it's your option whether you want to stay or go.
I would love to stay. I'm still invested in this community, so.
Good evening, Luke. I believe you'll see up there a piece of paper which kind of will go through the process and has the questions that we're going to go through. We'll ask for a brief introduction and then we'll proceed on with the questions. We have about 15 minutes for each candidate to go through. Post that, the council will get together and we'll decide next steps and let the candidates know where we're headed from there. So with that, I guess I'll start in. Each candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement to introduce themselves. So if you would be so kind, go ahead and tell us about yourself.
Yes, Mayor Ross and Snoqualmie City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. The first question was why do I want to be a council member? I'm a big fan of the good life definition of full use of abilities, the long lines of excellence and in trying to get a tough challenge done. And I see that you've got a tough challenge before you right now. A quick background, I have a co-engineer degree, spent seven years in the Army. I'm a first infantry division Desert Storm vet, 22 years in Silicon Valley and nine years in Snoqualmie, most recently doing a business incubator and substitute teaching, which I did sixth grade health today, actually. And I, in my time, really got to enjoy working with colleagues to collaborate and solve tough problems. One of the biggest ones actually was an Inevac and I'll just give a 60-second issue, 60-second description anecdote. We had a machine called the 200 Lane, which had 20 stations that had to go into deep space vacuum in terms of how, and discs, magnetic discs. And it had five pieces with four chambers a piece. And we put them all together in the factory floor, took many months. And once we got it all done, we took them all apart, sent them to the factory. And we had 10 more to go in two months and we were stuck. It was impossible. Our competitors were Ehrlichon from Switzerland and Enova from Japan. And by collaborating with the guys on the floor who said, we're tearing up these machines, we decided we're not going to put them together on the manufacturer. We're going to ship them to the factory, we're going to send the manufacturers to the factory and the field guys and put them all together out there. CFO didn't like it because he couldn't get paid till the machine was together. Customers weren't sure about it, but because as a team, we worked together to face the tough problem, we actually changed the industry, cut the lead time in half. It was a big win and today it gives me a lot of satisfaction because we collaborated together to solve a tough problem with our colleagues left and right. And that was a big, a big win. Also, I still like facing adversities. You'll see me on warm days running the parkway. We used to do it weather round. But if you want a little challenge, run up the parkway. It always knocks me out of whatever daydream when I run up that parkway. So challenge, run up that parkway and you'll get that daydream or you'll get out of your daydream and you'll be in the moment. And I want to help the council. I want to help the council with a vision to handle the adaptation it's got to go through, preserve what's important, handle the housing issues. I'm a big fan of business incubators. I still run the Snoqualmie Dream Factory. I still think there's some things we can do to generate business activity in the city and make sure the infrastructure meets the demands going forward. Was I in three minutes? How was that time wise?
It was spot on.
You want to ask person?
Okay. So we're a nonpartisan body representing the entire community. What will be your approach to representing an entire community and not only your immediate neighbors?
I would pound pavement and talk to folks. I would try to find not only the organized forums, but I also try to find neighborhoods that I may not know that well, that knock on doors and find out if I could talk to folks. And also go out to civic events, whether it be in the parks or others, introduce myself and try to find out what the needs are. And I actually think that's critical, I think it's absolutely critical for the challenges that Snoqualmie faces right now because it's a different environment and it seems to be changing quite rapidly. Can I answer your question?
He does. Thank you.
All right. And my, I know, my restart was about to go off. Apologies. I didn't want to get caught up in the same situation. All right, Mr. Maruziak, it's nice to see you. What experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
As I mentioned in my opening, I think working with colleagues to face a tough challenge, adapting to a change in the environment. And I think we've got a big one here. I've got to know the city a lot better over the last seven years. I've been here for, going on nine years, working on the EDC and then the Planning Commission with other forums. And this environment, the ability to respond to the change, I think, is a big strength of mine in working with people to fix that. And to change, just to highlight, over the last two years, my neighborhood's changed. My little corner block has changed pretty dramatically. So roughly a third to half the people have left and cashed out. New folks are there. Some of them I know, some of them I don't. And my big strength would be to find out what's important and to adapt to the change environment in addition to what the state and the county are asking us to do and the weird demographic stuff going on.
Thank you. Are there any particular local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
Yes, business. I've started a business incubator because I think generating more business activity in Snoqualmie is, I think it's important. And every problem that you have, every problem that you have gets better if you could generate the right type of business activity. Unfortunately, when I did the business activity, one of my first partners was food and the business model was, you know, go big with low volume or with high volume, low margin stuff. And I've concluded that's probably not the best way to go with food. So, well, I mean, that was hard born, hard won lesson learned. Nonetheless, I have not given up on the fact that incubator and business in the city is there. I'm also very interested in the housing, but it seems like there's a whole lot of talent on that. I think, again, there's creative answers beyond what we've got today for that.
Thank you. What do you feel is Snoqualmie's most valuable asset?
Combination of people and the natural environment. This environment, and I lived in Silicon Valley for 22 years, was, is amazing. I think we take it for granted way too much. My son still lives in California and I go down there and I go, why did it take me 20 years to leave? I mean, this area is really incredible. And if you walk just five minutes on the trail, I mean, it's, you're in, you know, you're in a wonderland of nature that you can find almost nowhere else. I would have to also talk about the people of Snoqualmie because it is a high-end professional place. Any place you go to and you talk, very intelligent folks, very concerned about the community and definitely wanting to make it better. And I'm talking about some of the folks that just got here, like bought a house six months ago and moved from New Jersey, sees Snoqualmie, like it and also say, it's something kind of special here, right? With the parks of the community, I want to keep it that way. So a combination of community and natural environment. Can I answer your question?
Mr. Maruziak.
Yes.
Good evening. What committee could you serve best on and how much time are you able to commit to doing this role?
First off, I am semi-retired and so I'm substitute teaching, which is a lot of fun. You really get to know the community that way and those sixth graders. Yeah, as far as the committee goes, I mean, I'm on the Planning Commission. So I interface with the Community Development Committee. And so I seem to have an affinity there, but I don't know enough about the other committees to say if one would be better than that. So that'd be my answer.
Thank you.
But that concludes the questions. Thank you very much. Like I said, at the post, we'll get, council will determine next steps. We'll let the candidates know. You're more than welcome to stay or go on with your life and listen to the rest of the candidates as you so choose.
Yeah, don't sit too close to that guy. I don't want the same thing to happen.
So Mike, if we could have Mike bring our man deep down? The doctor has arrived. Yeah, I don't want to do that in the middle of an interview. It's just rude. No. Then I would have to have six cans of pop and drink them in a period of two hours and I'd be wired. And if you will ask the introduction question on this one, then we'll proceed on and we'll just keep ratcheting a council member each time. Welcome, Dr. Leah. You'll see there a piece of paper which kind of has the process and also the five questions in case you need to refer back to them as we go through this. We'll ask for an introduction and then we'll go through the five questions with you. We have about 15 minutes per candidate. Post that, we, the council, will get together and we'll let the candidates know where we're proceeding from there after an exec session on our part. With that, I will go ahead and leave it over to Mr. Councilman Mayhew and he can ask for instructions.
So, welcome. And we're asking each candidate to take up to three minutes and give us an opening statement to introduce yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me? I'm short. Okay. Well, I'm Andy Walia and I am a physician and I am a mother of three boys living here in Snoqualmie for the last seven years. My husband is also here with us and he's a physician as well. And that's really about me.
Well, good evening. We are a nonpartisan body representing the entire community. What will be your approach to representing an entire community and not just your immediate neighbors?
Well, I think that, given my background in healthcare, I will be not only working to help get accessible and equitable and high-quality standard healthcare for all. I also feel like that I can work, because I've worked on multiple different committees and boards. And so I have the ability, one of my strong suits is actually community outreach and hosting events which bring in fundraising as well as highlight local businesses. So I'm also a mother and the three boys are in the Snoqualmie School District. They are in extracurricular activities, they are in sports, field sports. They are active in the Indian community. And so I, I'm visible, I'm out there, I'm relatable. I'm able to hear and see what the needs are of our community and bring it back to the board and be their sounding board and be able to address the issues out in the community, which is not just my neighbors. And giving healthcare and being a Board of Trustees on the King County Medical Society, I work with regional healthcare programs and bring back policy reforms, which I'm hoping to carry over here, which again affects. carry over here, which again affects everybody in the community and not just my neighbors.
What experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Well, over the years, I've worked on several nonprofit organizations. They were both, they're cultural, they're also housing-related as well as medical. And so when you work on various committees and boards, you, you learn a lot of leadership qualities. So I, I am, the ability to listen, be patient, be transparent, be an effective communicator and work well with a team. By being on several cultural committees, I think I reiterated, I have a strong background in community outreach and event planning. Being on the, being a physician, I work with a diverse set of people every day. I understand the need for affordable, equitable, high-quality healthcare for all, and I know how poor access to this healthcare can affect the economic growth of a city. Outside of this, I am, I represent a different voice for our community. I am an Asian American and the second largest ethnic group in our, in Snoqualmie, and I hope to use this voice to augment the work that's already going on in Snoqualmie today.
Are there any local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
I'm interested in anything affecting our city, but my strength lies in human services and community outreach. With, there are 25,000 people living on the streets in Washington and with the rise of cost of living and lack of resources for the mentally ill, lack of resources for substance abuse disorders, lack of resources for our seniors, this number will just continue to rise. And I think most people in Snoqualmie don't think this, this is actually a problem, but is it, it is an invisible problem. When I was working at the hospital, I was admitting homeless people that were sick because they're residing in the woods. So we need to continue finding innovative solutions to our affordable housing and to mitigate the housing crisis. And I hope to be part of that. At the same time, affordable housing brings in diversity and we need to be able to highlight that as well. I hope to be able to find resources for the mentally ill, for the seniors, whether this be better access to healthcare with satellite clinics or working with our care clinics, working with our shelters. And, and having them have better transportation. There's not a good source of transportation for people to access the healthcare. I'd also like to work with the youth. I think that the youth is our future generation. I want to hear what they have to say. I want to get them involved in civic engagement. I want them to tell us their needs. My son and his friends had brought up that they're go mountain biking and there's not a mountain bike trail because the one that they use is overrun by bush. And so this is the perfect opportunity to get them involved in the parks and recreation. I want to help keep them safe. I used to work for the city of Seattle in low housing, income housing, and there was little community centers. And I was employed to engage the children while their parents were at work and keep them busy. That way they're safe, not alone, and they are not engaging in high-risk behaviors. So I want to do a similar thing here with organized activities that's affordable. One of the issues is trying to have two parents work. So we have an expansion of the community center coming, but I hope that it'll be accessible and affordable to everyone here. So in the end, they're the generation that's going to be our future and it's important that we preserve and maintain our current city with their help.
Thank you. Dr. Walia, what do you feel is Snoqualmie's most valuable asset?
The thing that I feel or what I loved about Snoqualmie, whether it's an asset or not, I'm not sure, but it is, it's family orientation. It is extremely family-oriented. You, people say hi to you, they know who you are, they're very friendly, majority is very inclusive, that cohesiveness, the, the Fourth of July, the, the, what is it, movies in the park, the concerts in the park. I think cohesiveness and community and togetherness is really what makes up a community and I think that is the most valuable asset. And that is what draws people to this community or this city, actually.
Thank you.
And what committee could you serve best on and/or how much time are you able to devote to the job?
So I've actually gone part-time, so I have a lot more time to devote to civic duties. And I would serve best on committees that are human services-related and community engagement and outreach. Just given my background with not only healthcare, but I did a lot of community outreach as volunteer and on boards and, and that sort of thing.
Thank you. And that concludes the questions that we'll run through. You're more than welcome to stay to listen to the remaining candidate as you so fit or understand kids and everything else. If you want to get on with life, post this, we will have a executive session and we'll then inform candidates where we're headed after this meeting. Okay? At that stage, Mike, could we have Mr. Washington into the alphabet? As he said, we
Is that how they were organized? It's the last name?
Um, no.
It's the order in which the application
No, we were joking about because
I couldn't figure it out.
It was random or Yeah. Karen, and Karen, if you will do the ask for introduction, then we'll start with it. You're up front, sir. Should see a piece of paper there that has kind of the process and questions we're going to go through. We're going to ask for a brief introduction on yourself and then we'll proceed through five questions. We've got about 15 minutes per candidate. Okay. And then post that, we, the council, will go into executive session, determine what are the next steps. We've got a couple of things to work through with that. Karen?
Mr. Washington, good evening. We're happy to have you here this evening. Would you please take three minutes and go ahead and do an opening statement and an introduction about yourself?
Okay. My name is Louis Washington and I've lived here in Snoqualmie Ridge actually for five years. And I work for Johnson &amp; Johnson in mental health, something that's near and dear to my heart, just various experiences that I've had with a friend over the years. And I actually serve currently right now on the EDC. I've been there for about a year. I also work with Councilmember Rob on the Affordable Housing Task Force. And recently, going to be working with the Community Center Expansion Advisory Committee. So I'm really excited about that. And I've just had a really great experience getting to know the community and getting to know the issues that you all wrestle with. And I just think it's a, it's a great community. And I've said this before and I'll say it again, great decisions have been made to get us where we are right now. And I think there are going to be some more great decisions being made and I'd like to be a part of that conversation. I'll kind of focus here just on some priorities that, you know, general priorities. So I want to focus on, you know, being an EDC member, EDC member, focus on supporting local businesses here in Snoqualmie, preserving the rich sense of community that we have here and also ensuring a sustainable environment for all Snoqualmie residents. My why is to serve and represent all residents of Snoqualmie. I want to address the needs and then enhance the livability here. I want to be a part of the conversation on how the city of Snoqualmie progresses in the future. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. For the first of the five main questions here, we're a nonpartisan body representing the entire community. What will be your approach to representing an entire community and not only your immediate neighbors?
You know, when thinking about that, Councilmember Johnson, I've always, I've, I pride myself on being able to listen to others, consider all opinions, consider all needs before reaching a conclusion and making a decision. So what I would say to the council is, in no way am I showing up here and, you know, wanting to be a part of the council in a partisan way, working on the EDC, working on the Affordable Housing Task Force. I've worked with everyone that I, that I could work with here in the city and just really discovering and learning the needs of the people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Love this. I feel really lucky to live in this city. Just listening to all these peoples, but thank you. All right, next question. What experiences, talents, or skills do you, do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Well, just thinking about, I mean, obviously my business background, but I want to focus for a minute on community mental health. And again, just a passion of mine. I was really inspired to be at the, the retreat this weekend and to learn that there are going to be some supportive services offered through the fire department and through the police department for mental health. And that's really inspiring. I mean, you know, I was, kind of heard some rumblings that, well, you know, that's something that may be offered and to see that come to fruition, I mean, I just, you know, hats off to everyone here. I work with a lot of clients that suffer from mental health and, you know, have, have been involved in situations that are unfortunately just kind of ugly, that people that, living homeless, eating out of garbage cans, you know, tarps for houses. So I think that the more we can have that discussion, talk about it, and the right wraparound services being added, the right treatments out there, we talk about public safety for our community, I think that does nothing but enhance our safety and our public safety as a community. The other piece I would say, you know, just in my business background, definitely operation budgets, operating budgets and capital budgets, I have a lot of experience with them. But again, always remembering to be fiscally responsible and evaluating priorities, you know, what are some of the top priorities? I think it was said best by Councilmember Holloway at the retreat, you know, we have a 15, we have a 15 pound of stuff that needs to get into a five-pound-a-bag. How do we do it? Right? And so I think that's where the respect, the ability to, to listen to each other and collaborate with one another and to prioritize needs, asking tough questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Washington. That was 15 pounds of feathers into a five-pound bag. For those of you who did not have privy to that, so thank you.
I'm brought into our horse feathers.
Don't want to misquote anyone.
So are there any particular local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
Absolutely. I think the work that's been done, that I've seen on the Affordable Housing Task Force, I'm really excited about that. Again, a lot of tough decisions to be made. Where do we get the land? Do we annex? I mean, we've talked about everything on the task force, the land banks, you know, how do we get the land? Where does the money come from? But I think if we are able to cooperate regionally, you know, I, I think that helps with an answer to the question. The other piece I would say is transportation, definitely offering more transportation to the area, so bus routes, et cetera. I think that that's a question that, that probably would be answered, better answered in regional cooperation, kind of like what we did with SR-18 and the I-90 interchange.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any particular local or regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise?
I was going to do the same thing.
What do you feel is Snoqualmie's most valuable asset?
Oh, that's a really good question, Councilmember Holloway. In my experience, again, working with, serving on the EDC, working with the Affordable Housing Task Force, hands down, I have to say, it's the people here. We may not all agree on things and we get passionate, myself a lot, about certain things in life, right? It's just the way it is. And I'm looking around the table here and I see a lot of people, we have different walks of life, but at the end of the day, we can disagree, but we can find ground that we do agree on, right? And so to answer that question, I would say the people, the people, and that's why I'm here today, that, you know, I definitely built inroads through the EDC, but I think my experience working with the EDC has, has opened me more to city government and, you know, some of the challenges that we see here, but also how we've solved some of the problems and just the goodness of the people and the hearts being in the right place. I've talked about the mental health services that's being offered. I mean, two years ago, I don't know, maybe we wouldn't even speak of it. And we recognize that the, that the need is here and we have the right people in place, people listening to the community and we got something put in place for the people.
What committee could you serve best on and/or how much time will you be able to give the job?
When I think about a committee, I think about the ED Committee, the Economic, sorry, the Community Development Committee, CD Committee, just very akin to what I'm doing now in the EDC, different issues, right? But in terms of engendering myself with, with time, I mean, I'm ready to serve. So I think, just kind of looking at my background and what I've done so far with the EDC, the Affordable Housing Task Force, and just being able to participate in other aspects of what we do here, and, you know, now with the Community Center Expansion Advisory Committee, I, I think that you can see that I'm definitely all in. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There's no correct, right, wrong.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I answered the question completely.
All right, thank you. With that, that'll conclude the questions. I believe that concludes our candidates. At this time, the we, the council, will go into executive session. We'd like to hold that here. If you want to come back after executive session, come on back. But in the meantime, if you want to stay, we ask that you go back upstairs to the conference room. So we may have deliberative discussions amongst ourselves. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you all.
All of you, yeah, all of you, thank you so much.
Giving us a rough decision to make.
I think you also goes to the online folks as well.
Okay, so I need to read in. So we're going to pursuant to chapter RCW 35A, dot 12, dot 065, in the city. You said? Is that the right one?
No.
I think so.
RCW
RCW 42, dot 30, dot 110, 1H, to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. However, any interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting open to the public. So City Council, you can take a, we will take a five-minute recess and reconvene at So city council, you can take a, we will take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 7:30. And who shall attend? We'll have our city attorney Sturbank, city administrator Sauerwine and councilmembers and Mayor Ross. All right, so we will get out of our of the meeting and then we will come back after the executive session, which how long do you think it will last? An hour?
At least an hour.
At least an hour. So we will reconvene at probably 8:30. Thank you. Okay, we are, welcome back from the executive session. It is now 8:28. Mayor Protem Holloway, do you have any comments you would like to share?
First, I would like to thank all the candidates. You've presented the council with a very difficult decision. We have an amazing pool of candidates with diverse experiences. Amazing amount of volunteerism in the community engagement through commissions, committees. Again, services they do, both locally in the city and regionally. The fact that we have candidates willing to step up and say, hey, I'm willing to spend the time to, in service of the community is, is a great gift to the council. But it does provide us a difficult question to answer, which we've delivered over the last hour or so. But it also gives us some comfort in that I don't think there's a wrong answer whichever way we go. We've got a great pool to choose from, so it should be good moving forward. With that, I will open the floor in case anybody wished to make a motion how to move forward. Am I chair? Councilman Mayhew, you want to?
Councilman Mayhew.
I move to appoint Louis Washington to fill vacant position five on the Snoqualmie City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor, Councilman Mayhew and second by Councilman Johnson to appoint Louis Washington to the city council, seat five. Council, do you have any discussion? Councilman Walton?
I want to echo Mayor Protem's comments. It is amazing, the incredible talent and the pool of talent that we had to deliberate tonight. And we are so thankful to have you all stepped forward and want to commit more time. And I just encourage each and every one of you that we need you as part of Snoqualmie's government, governance going forward. And there is a place at the table for everyone. And we, we are so thankful for you putting yourself forward.
Councilman Mayhew?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Our, my sense, certainly my own point of view and my sense of all of us on the council is we would really like to work with each of the candidates. We'd really like to see you stay and stay involved and become more involved to the extent you can. We would really like to work with each of you. You're fantastic candidates and, and we really we're excited about each and every one of you. And unfortunately, we have to choose one tonight, but we would really like to be able to work with all of you.
Any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Well, congratulations to Louis Washington for being our new city council member appointed to council seat number five. Yay. Hey. There's applause in the I agree, there is, there were, there are very amazing candidates that stepped up. And I know, you know, many of you volunteer for the city and we're always continually looking for great commissioners and so we look forward to, for working with you further. So thank you very much. And seeing there's no other business commute for us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Protem Holloway and second by Councilwoman Walton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, we are just a unanimous group tonight, huh?